You want to come up?
Yes.
Do you have the map? Okay, good. You can give them to them. They'll take those.
Would you have it?
Would you do it? It's like over here in the show. Structures from the other parcels. There you go.
It's got all the properties.
Yep, so expanded map that shows property ownership information. Then the structures that are on those, both the southern parcels and then the office building on the town.
All the green cards we need, so that is all set.
Excellent.
There was one that wasn't sent back, but she actually was like a diagonal neighbor, so.
Who was it?
Cassangeli Channing.
She's on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
And she is deceased.
Oh, well, that would be why she didn't return her green card, huh?
So she's deceased.
Okay, so that's good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let Barb know. We'll put that in. Thank you. It's been.
Building code.
Number of years.
No, these I think are all the correct ones. What section would it be in this? Oh, well, let's not post that.
I think that the only issues we wanted were for him to designate the buildings on each piece.
Well, I'm questioning the setback, I guess, from the front to the road. There are sixty, it was seventy-five in my mind.
Okay, so we're looking that up?
We're gonna look that up.
Okay, setback sixty. I thought it was sixty, though.
Solar collectors may be installed at any front yard but shall not be less than seventy-five feet from the front property line and shall require a special use permit.
I thought you were ten feet over that now.
Yeah, I believe that we were.
Oh, we're just reading what you put here. Zoning setbacks sixty feet. I think you're just listing this, the setbacks as the wrong length.
Oh, does it say setbacks?
On your site data?
Yeah, it says sixty feet.
Oh.
But I'm assuming.
Your third box down.
Is there a?
Maybe.
But it says down here, ground mount setbacks from.
Oh.
So, okay, under site data, but here it says, if you look down here, it says the setbacks are seventy-five. Okay, perfect. So it does list the proper setbacks, but up here it just says zoning setbacks. Ground mount setbacks. Okay, so that's listed correctly here on the bottom.
Maybe the garage is sixty-four?
And the garage better be sixty-four, or shut me. I don't know how long ago that was put up. Either way, he's got the rights. It's gonna be more than seventy-five, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, it'll be eighty-five.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So are there any questions from the people here? We don't have very many. Okay, so we have to wait the designated.
Fifteen minutes, so we got fourteen minutes.
You okay? Just checking.
All right.
I'm good.
Okay.
That's what I meant about this.
Oh, yeah? Either I have this project done or in the year.
That's a very quick one.
I'll just screw them in the ground.
Well, we had to, because we are subcontractor that does the ground screws for the footings. They have filled up like crazy, so if, we had to designate installation timelines with them ahead of time with a deposit, so. Yeah, we had to.
Are they set? Are they set, basically? They got a date?
It's mostly set. I don't believe that it is. You know, we might have a date, but.
What, are they screwed in and put up the, the, the structure and then you guys come in and put on the panels or they?
Yeah, yeah, so they do the, they draft the plans for us for all of the, the mounting spec. They do the ground screws, and then they'll machine the steel floor as well.
Where are the, the inverter and the, are they mounted on the?
So this system is a microinverter system, so underneath each panel, there will be a designated microinverter attached. So it'll invert the AC right at the panel. It will have a combiner panel at the array that'll act as a AC disconnect, as well as an AC disconnect on the outside of the residence.
Does a meter get mounted on the array?
No, it, it'll just go through the, so this is a supply side tap. So we'll have this tapped into the system on the house side of the, between the main service panel and meter. So everything running out of the main house's meter will get it.
And everything comes underground?
Yes.
Where's your headquarters? I'm just curious.
Manance, just outside Albany. Used to be in Colony, but we had a whole shuffle around, so.
See, yeah, I see the vehicles around quite a bit.
Yeah, we go, our installation map, it blows my mind sometimes for, yeah, all the way up to Shattigay, down, to just outside the city. So we go down deep in Rockland and Westchester as well. But, yeah, so we're riding the same.
That's what I'm like.
Same two building warehouse as Castleman as well. So we're right up.
Different?
When you sign this, is that where they're going? I have twenty-seven. And. I have, I actually have the home built nineteen-eight. For yourself, it's ten degrees west of that, so.
So.
Not that that matters here, but.
I think that.
For efficiency.
There are some cases where we do that. But I think for the most part, we go straight one-eighty as a monso, straight south, for the most part. But, that being said, I'm also a designer, so, or I'm not a designer, so I, yeah, I wouldn't know entirely.
Yeah. I had the home built facing that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the way to do it, just because it can, it can be such a crap shoot or how it comes out. So if you can anticipate it, plan it, put it in, then go.
Since we're all here, I'd be curious exactly what is getting asked of your questions. Unfamiliar with what you do and what's gonna be placed. We use Nexant, so we already use a community solar, and I wonder if that's the same kind of thing?
No, this is just, so what we're proposing here is a nineteen-point-three-five kilowatt system. So it's a small, smaller side system for residential use, so it'll just be for the purpose of onsite consumption for this property.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, privately owned and.
Is it residential or is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a small.
Yes.
Ground mount solar.
It is.
I had twenty-seven panels rooftop on my home, facing solar south, I think ten years ago.
Yeah, so this is about, yeah, so this is forty-five panels.
Some of them.
It's like just under a thousand square feet in the, in the yard and, yeah. And then it's a, a little bit, I think community solar is a lot more dependable and a lot more access to it for homes that can't, that don't, that don't have the capital investment to put in, don't want to take that risk themselves, and can provide consistent benefit, even if it's a little bit less. But when you own your system, you get a direct kilowatt to kilowatt tracking by the utility. So they'll track all of the power that you export to the grid. And they'll keep a running total of that that you can build up, generate more electricity than you use in the summertime, springtime. And then once you get into the late fall, through the winter, you're not really producing a whole lot. And then, so you've got a big bank that you've built up with the utility, and they'll apply it to your utility bill then, so, and, yeah.
So we use Nexant. We, we looked at putting it on our roof, but the roof's position's too messed up and wasn't, in fact, I think it was your company. But the only problem that I found using Nexant and Central Hudson is that the billing has become incomprehensible. You need a team of accountants for when it's in the world to figure this out.
Yeah.
It's an active fit.
Yeah, and it's.
You're hoping you're getting a better rate.
Yeah.
I have a close friend who just put in a. Array, ground mounted array in another town, neighboring town, that used it as a, doubled it as a car park.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And working out well for him. He, that was my suggestion, and he followed, and he's, both husband and wife are very happy. It's working out well. I have, with the twenty-seven panels that I installed, I have, the house was designed by a solar engineer, and it faces solar south, super insulated, one Mitsubishi air source heat pump, seventeen below zero in the winter, heated the entire upstairs.
It's fun, so with your own solar, it's fun to watch your meter spin backwards.
Yeah, I haven't played for the white.
Yeah, and the first few years, I got checks from, I got checks from Central Hudson. It all depends. My system was a no payment down or no money down, like they took the benefit, the, the tax rebate or whatever.
Is that sending soon now, wasn't it? That was my next.
So that was a leased system.
It is a leased system. At twenty years, they take it off. So I, I pay an incremental amount, starting at like a hundred and eight dollars a month.
If you're thinking.
You always have to pay for delivery.
I think the legislation is being lined up to end the, the tax.
Yep.
Right?
So.
I, I heard something at the end of the year, it's gonna be a grant that's gonna end, but right now, because I called Tesla a couple of months ago to find out what they would charge. They called like eighty-eight thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah.
For the.
For the system. For the system for your house.
And there's no rebates on that anymore?
There's a thirty, thirty, thirty percent discount off of, grant off of your income tax.
Yes, so it's thirty percent.
So even if you make a lot of money.
Yeah, if your tax liability is high and you can forward that.
If you're doing it for a business, maybe that would be worth it, you know, I don't know if that grant applies to businesses as well.
It does. The, the thirty percent in addition is gonna, you're allowed to roll that over until when the program was originally going to end. So if your tax liability doesn't meet that threshold the first year, you can keep forwarding it until you use that benefit, I believe until it was thirty-four. And thankfully, with the change of the, the federal regulation, they did not remove that. So people that still have benefit that is noted by tax agency will still be able to use that benefit into the future. But it is hit or miss, and you really should know your tax liabilities before getting into that arrangement, because, yeah, moving, moving quickly can leave you with money that you thought you were going to be getting off of your taxes and, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Totally sound good.
Five more minutes.
Now, we got, we got two more.
We started a little early.
Oh, okay.
But that Tesla pricing, I could see that being, do you know what kilowatt system that might have been for?
I didn't go into details. I just wanted to get a rough idea.
Was it on the business?
But that was also including with the power pack.
Oh, yeah, well, there's, so that's probably more than half the cost right there is the batteries.
That was probably at least twenty, if not more, probably, probably more, because the batteries are, batteries are hit and miss. It can be good if you already have a generator and you have dependable energy generation already. It can increase the fuel efficiency in your generator by going through a charge.
We're, we're selling the man a move. The whole audience is gonna buy a new solar.
You bring the barbs.
We already know our house isn't facing the right direction, so. Eighty thousand's a little steep.
It is steep, because I was gonna say, if that was like, hey, we don't know if we're gonna be able to install you, and we're not really selling for the end of this year anymore. So if you want a chance to be installed this year, we're gonna charge you this much, because if you're desperate, you're desperate. But they could be.
How can you be desperate for solar panels?
Because they're ending a capless thirty percent tax incentive for it this year. So if, if somebody has a gigantic tax liability, they can get a gigantic system and things can work out for them. So people that are, have that tax liability pressure.
Is that federal credit?
The federal credit is going away.
But, but is the one you're talking about, is that a federal credit or state credit?
Yes, it's a federal credit.
So you don't think they're gonna bring out another one once this one expires?
Not the federal. Administration is not friendly to solar and/or wind. I don't think that it will come back, especially because of where that legislation had been tied from, which is unfortunate for solar, because it had gotten boosted by the Inflation Reduction Act, and it wasn't the original origin of that. So it got tied in with the politics of it, but I could see.
Expensive.
Yeah, I could see.
It's one of the most expensive, most expensive points of management.
Solar is?
Yeah.
So you think there's a chance of the price coming down after the incentives are gone?
I think that.
You're right. I think so, thank you.
I, I don't think so. I think it will stabilize at some point. I think that the market will be in a very weird place, because there's projections that say that there could be a forty percent demand blow to the industry. So those who stay might consolidate what resources they have to be able to offer more stabilized pricing to customers, depending on if they're hit with tariffs or not. I can see New York upping their incentives as well, because NYSERDA offers a write-off top incentive based on your system size that goes to the installer, or it would go to you to pay the installer. And then New York also has a twenty-six percent, twenty-six percent tax credit, but it's capped at five thousand, five thousand dollars. So I could see them upping or removing that cap just for the sake of being able to.
I'm sorry, but we are going to, can I get a motion to close public? You're so.
Second.
Okay, alrighty, we will now open the, thank you, by the way.
No problem.
We will now open our regular planning board meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And.
Well, let's see, now we can read the resolution. Anyone on the board have questions?
Um, I think we need to just approve the map, the site plan map. Accept it, that we accept it.
Alrighty, and, and the resolution should be. Okay, we probably should do a motion to accept it. Sure, a motion to accept the site plan?
You making a motion?
Well, I thought I wasn't supposed to.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to accept the, the, the site plan for Castleman Solar.
Second?
Second? Oh, oh, I thought you were, I'll second it.
Okay. We'll get it. We have a little bit of a different setup here tonight.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll do the resolution. Okay. Resolution granting special use permit site plan application, whereas Lynn Rocket wishing to construct a ground mount solar array on parcel bearing tax map number twenty-seven-point-zero-zero-dish-two-dish-one-point-twenty-two at three-eighty-one Old Kings Road, Hanukkah, had their authorized agent Castleman Solar submit a building permit application to the building department for placement of a nineteen-point-three-five kilowatt tier-two ground mounted solar array, which measures eight-hundred-forty-six-point-eighty square feet in size, and whereas pursuant to town code section, excuse me, chapter, one-one-one, section seven, all two-tiered solar energy systems shall be permitted in the rural agricultural, commercial, industrial, developmental and developmental multifamily residential zoning districts in town and in Baltimore through the issuance of a special use permit. And whereas the building permit was denied and referred to the planning board for site plan and special use permit considerations. And whereas authorized representative of Castleman Solar submitted a site plan special use permit application at the August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five planning board meeting, and whereas the short environmental assessment form was reviewed and given a negative declaration for the purpose of sequin. And whereas public hearing having been duly sworn notice was held on September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, with members of the public offering no comment. It was resolved that the Lynn Rocket special use permit and site plan application be approved with no conditions. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution for Castleman Solar Lynn Rocket ground mounted solar array.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, you're done with us.
I wish I wasn't. I wanna hang out.
I'll send over Monday morning coffee.
Okay.
Okay?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Do they, do you want these back?
No, I, you don't want the site planers.
No, that's good.
Business Rocket, can I have them?
I'll take your copy.
Okay.
I can hold you a sample. Are we stamping this one? I would just stamp it. There's a space for us to stamp.
Let me stamp that.
You can use Josh's copy or my copy or anybody's copy. You want to stamp her copy? That it was approved. This, I would stamp it, sign it.
Absolutely.
There's a little space on the thing there. There you go.
Okay, here is, thank, thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Thank you again, everybody.
Yeah, good night.
Do these all have to be signed?
No, I'll just take one for my file. It's fine.
All right. Uh, the next order of business is Kevin Rounds ZBA referral. Okay, uh, we have a change in this. We spoke to the owner and Mr. Rounds today. We are not going to do the ZBA referral because they've changed.
This didn't go out?
No.
No, nothing went out, nothing was signed.
Did you make some, two different property owners?
Did I?
Yes.
Yes.
From the previous month of.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Well, at least it didn't go out.
Yes, no.
Well, that's why you guys are here.
Even the notes on the second page are for that, too.
No, the notes on the second page are from the owner of Mr. Aaron's.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that, I see it.
You'll catch them.
That's because I use the templates for my thing.
Okay, well, so needless to say, instead of the lot line adjustment, we are now going for a minor subdivision. And the parcel that he was going to have under two acres will now be two acres. Mr. Rounds also want us, he wanted to thank everyone for guiding him through this process. And so the owner and Mr. Rounds will be submitting drawings to properly reflect the property. And they're also doing a consolidation for one of the parcels. So we explained to him that, once we get the revised drawings to reflect the minor subdivision and the, the lot that will be code compliant, we will take a look at it and probably send it to the ZBA, because the Eastman will have three parcels using it as a driveway.
Okay, and that's, you can have that, though, right? We, we just. True, it was only two, right, okay.
Unless.
Do we have?
It's stated in the deed, maybe.
Well, do we have from the previous subdivision when that was divided up? Do we have, does town have maps of that?
I'm not sure.
That was, I think Mr. Burns owned that property?
I don't know. It's, I mean, it's been, the property's been subdivided, and now he wants to consolidate some of it back and subdivide another parcel of it. I just don't know if we had the original maps for the property.
I'm not sure about that, for sure.
Because that might explain the Eastman, too.
Well, I heard there's a discrepancy in the center parcel, where one person's got it drawn as a triangle and the other person has.
That we also resolved, because Mr. Rounds, I think, took it upon himself to create what he thought would be in the best interest of the landowner. Because the tax map does not show it as that. But.
Well, that's why I would like to see.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Survey.
I'll see what I can dig up for Josh.
Okay.
Um, go ahead. The, are we going to send over the denial letter then to Mr. Rounds for the lot line adjustment application?
Yes, I think we should.
Okay, so that.
And that, solve that.
Right. And we have the letter. I'll send the minor subdivision application when I send the letter.
Yes.
Um, if you just want to make sure the letter looks good and sign a copy and maybe say co-chair, so that it's official, so I can send it out.
Okay, let's see.
Just make sure it's the right one, because obviously I messed up.
Yeah, but we thought it, that's important.
Can we pull our paper? That's the worst thing we could do. If there's any changes, I'll make them.
You checked the property numbers?
Yep, I had the map right in front of me when I was doing it. I can double check while I was standing there.
Please do.
That's not thirty-one. There's, it's just supposed to be one. I don't know how with three out in there. I was rushing. So just the one that says thirty-one, it's just supposed to be one.
Okay.
You'd say. Mistyped. Is it okay?
Um, do you want to change that?
I can, absolutely can. It'll take me just a second.
Okay. Okay. So that's done. Next, new business. Linda Baldini and Ron applying lot line adjustment application. Okay. Did everyone take a look at the application? Do you have maps?
We submitted great copies of the survey to April when we brought the application in.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just printed it out a little bigger, uh, letters.
Okay.
I just had it shrunk down so it didn't waste paper.
Okay. I'm going to give this back.
Thank you.
Um, do you have the maps, the plans, the maps for this Linda Baldini?
I sure do.
Okay.
It's Galita and Ron.
It's Galita.
It's Galita. I've gotten it wrong enough times, but now I remember. There, there didn't have to be a motion there on the denial letter, right? Everybody agree? I think that's, okay, I just want to make sure the cover stuff.
Yeah. Do it to make sure.
I think it's fine.
Well, we were denied it last time when we sent it to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Right, there was just no official letter.
The sorrow on this one.
Yeah, only one official letter.
You did it. We got it, so it's fine, so we'll, we'll, we'll do it that way. It's fine.
Alrighty. Alrighty.
We own both, we own both pieces of the property.
You wanna come up and explain if anyone has any questions?
Sure, we own both pieces of the property involved. And, um, what had happened was when this pond was placed here, um, can you squiggle? My arms aren't that long, so... When this pond was placed, it actually ended up being right on the property, what had been the property line. Um, we would like to sell this parcel of land and we just felt it's kind of unusual, odd and problematic to have the property line also be the shoreline. So what we're asking to do is simply to take a tiny bit off of this piece of property, kind of square off this edge so that this and this will now belong to the, what is the smaller parcel. And the whole, the whole, the A and the B all boil down to about a tenth of an acre. And this is, this piece is five acres and change and this lot is thirty-three acres and change.
The old, uh, property lines aren't shown on this then?
Yeah, they are.
We should have really done this in colors. I was told I couldn't bring out my crayon.
So this, this is part of the old line?
The old line, actually, there was a stream that was the border of the property, that was the border of the two properties. Um, the previous owner of this parcel simply kind of dug out the side of the stream to create the pond.
Mm-hmm.
So that this is, with the little dots on it, is the old property line.
Oh, it went here originally and then jogged back.
That's right. It jogged back.
So you gotta go straight across now?
We're gonna, we're gonna go straight across so that, as I say, first of all, it's a nice, nice line. And secondly, whoever ends up owning this property will actually...
They will maintain the pond.
Will be able to maintain the pond and we won't be playing, you know, who's
Yep.
three square acres is that shoreline?
Who's on my shoreline?
That's right. Who's boat's on my shoreline? Exactly. You guys got it down there?
Yeah.
I find it easier to look at the smaller map. I know the smaller map, the smaller map kind of gives you a better idea of the two, the entirety of the two parcels.
I guess it doesn't show what it is currently. It's showing what they want.
They're showing both. Show them the, the line there.
So where is the old one? This is the old property line here. I think.
But it's nowhere near the pond.
This is a pond too.
Oh, this is another pond. I'm looking at this pond. It's this pond up here. Alright. That's why I'm gonna use different ponds.
Well, it's like, we're, we're focusing folks all over here. This is what she's looking at.
And that's why you said the smaller map is kind of easier to see.
Bubbles on it is the original property line.
Gotcha.
And so when this pond was created, part of it is on the property line, part of it is over the property line. We won't talk about all of that. And so what we just wanna do is kind of, you know, come around the pond so that this area now belongs to that property so they can maintain the pond. And as your colleague said, we won't get into whose boat is on which side of the pond, on whose shoreline.
It's only one person's pond.
And so, that's right. So that it's only one person's pond and there's no question about...
Are you guys gonna use it together?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna sell that piece of property and we're gonna use that pond.
You got your own nice pond.
We got our own nice pond.
Okay.
They're about the same size too.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's less than an acre that's getting moved?
Yeah, there's a, it's a tenth of an acre. There's two little triangles. There's this little piece here and there's this itty bitty piece here. And there, I think, a tenth of an acre.
Okay. Alright, so everyone has all the questions answered? And did everyone take a look at the, uh, application?
Yes.
Okay, everything looks...
I'm just trying to, I did get the chance to go through all the si, uh, acreage. Is everything proper?
It, it, it appears, yes, the thirty-four point one seven dollars changing to thirty-four point zero seven oh.
Five point four, five point five.
Being added onto property two, so it goes from five point four to five point five.
And that's reflected on the map? Where? I don't see that on the map at all.
Well, it's reflected, yeah.
Maybe on top.
Yeah.
Where do you see it?
On top.
Um, yeah, but it doesn't list the acreage, if that's what you're looking for about.
I think it's listed in the, in the rather extensive text that came with it.
Okay.
It's mind-boggling.
Let's see. Acres after this action, it's on the map. Thirty-four point zero seven zero acres after this action.
And that one would be this one.
Yeah, and then this is five point five acres.
So are you here?
Yeah.
And it's on the bottom there.
I don't know. So it doesn't show both full properties on this map. We're not seeing the full property. That's why we're looking at a small portion of it.
Looking at the, where the line is being.
Well, you got it in the...
That's why the, that's why the smaller map actually makes more sense to a certain extent.
Mm-hmm.
Because...
Where's the pond on that smaller map? It's up here. I think you mean up here. You're not standing.
This is...
Here you go.
Yeah, there, there you go. So this is the, this is the, you know, the, our pond is, is down here somewhere and then the new pond kind of clips into that. So, yeah, that's why at a certain point the smaller maps are much more helpful.
Yeah.
Because these two, the two properties were never surveyed together previously. I mean, we have a survey for this map and then we have a survey for that whole subdivision that shows that property because the smaller property is actually part of a subdivision.
So in the end, neither property's gonna have an accurate survey of each full piece?
Um, only...
Only this section.
Only, yeah, essentially you're going to need...
Well, we, it's a lot line adjustment, so we can determine how much we want to request. I think it says that, check it, we should check it though. I think it does say we have the option to waive certain things.
I don't see why, why that would be necessary.
Yeah. Making me do it.
Well, I'm just asking. I don't know if I have a better opinion on it. I just usually when you're changing two properties, you have a ser, we're having a survey done of only what's changing.
The lot line, um, was supposed to make things a little simpler.
Well, no public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, I think so far that's the only simple part.
Yeah, we won't get into that part. But I don't think, uh...
I mean, I hate to say this, and, you know, to have both of the, both properties completely re-surveyed, my guess is that we were in the seven to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Again, I'm only bringing it up. I'm not saying you have to.
I'm just, yeah.
We're also bringing it up.
Because although we want them to stay, we don't wanna support them.
We're gonna get killed with papers. Overkill with papers.
Overkill with papers, yes. We do already have the, um, the new deed descriptions for both lots as well.
Well, it's all here.
Tap on anybody's...
That's not really...
Actually, I think it's just the descriptions of what other pieces there are being moved. It does not...
That's what the conveyance, yeah.
So it is.
Right.
And then a survey showing both adjacent properties and land, but you also got that in here. But it's not a survey. That survey is showing.
Well, to simplify the process, I'd like to recommend that we accept this. Does anyone have an issue with that?
Well, that's what we were looking up at, that was an issue or not.
And can you attach one of the copies of the smaller, uh, thing? Because she said that...
It's on, it's right on there.
Right. Here, let me see. I remember writing this in the... I must have a quick one, yeah. Well, since they both, they own both pieces with a lot line.
But they're separate parcels.
Right, they're separate parcels.
I'll say this, being such a large piece of property, even in our subdivision rules, we don't require people to survey their entire property. Only what they're subdividing off, if it falls below a certain acreage, which this certainly does. Personally, I'm okay with what we got here.
Yeah.
It doesn't say in their book, you know, the survey of entirety of the parcels. But you do show that here and here, in these two sketches.
Well, I think, um, I'd like to go with this, approve it. Does anyone on the board have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, yeah, because I don't feel it's appropriate to have you go through.
So we're gonna approve the application and then, once, um, everything comes back, the resolution is done, probably next month, then we'll stamp and sign the note.
Perfect. Okay, so we're going to, we'll do a motion. I don't know. To approve the map and the application for the accept?
Make a motion to accept. Um, we have, uh, maps and
Application.
Application for Ronald Klein and...
Galita.
Galita. Baldini, uh, for, for lot line adjustment.
Okay, all in favor? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, we'll do the short environmental assessment.
While we, uh, while we ask about the deeds.
The deeds, okay.
Have the deeds been prepared for each parcel?
No, they have not. We have, we have the conveyance described, but we have not... Because we didn't really wanna have the deeds done until we knew that, that it was gonna be approved.
Okay. And, um, all Laura needs to do for us to approve this is have the conveyance, not the final deed.
We need, I thought we had, they had the final deeds.
I thought so too.
That's what, prior to approving an altered lot line,
Yes.
the deed conveying the parcel.
Who told you that? Of convey.
And the deed of the land, adjacent landowner, which describes his existing property and parcel being acquired.
Okay, well, I can check in, but the last time I had given her the final deeds, she made me go back and get the conveyance description. So I was, I have been giving the final deeds, but she said that's not what she needed. She needed the conveyance. So I thought this was all that was needed
Okay.
to get it approved, to go for approval. Yeah.
Yeah. Because I thought, yeah. Okay, we will call her and, um...
I know, I got plenty of things to talk about.
Yes.
And we'll double check on the deeds.
And just, we can quote our code.
Right.
I mean, giving us authority, did not follow the code.
No, I don't think that's...
Yeah, okay, so, alright. Okay, we're gonna do the, any other questions on that? I thought we always got the deeds as well. Yeah, that's what it says.
Well, as I say, we were also in a little bit of a loop. We didn't see of going to having attorney rewrite the deeds and then finding out that...
Oh, usually we don't get the deeds the first meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, cool.
So you're fine.
I just wanna let you know that you have to have it done.
Oh, yeah, we do have to have it done. We just, it was the order of things.
There's time.
Okay, cool.
Bob, you're reading that. Anything else?
Well, the deed conveying the parcel in issue, which they created, it's all that. The deed of the adjacent landowner, which describes his existing property, so they want his existing deed. And the parcel being acquired from the grantor, which was already done. Either a single parcel or there's two separate parcels in accordance with the provisions of subsection D above. I don't know, you gotta sit here and cipher all this. The adjacent landowners should prepare and record a deed which describes a single parcel, his or hers, and his or hers existing property and the parcel being acquired from the grantor. In an event, however, a survey of the adjacent landowner's property is not used, then adjoining landlord shall prepare and record one deed which describes both his and her existing parcels being acquired from the grantor as two separate parcels. This goes on, I'm sorry. I don't know if any of that's making sense to anybody.
No.
We'll get the deeds.
Yeah, I will.
We'll forward it, seeker.
We have the deeds as they stand, so we'll just take our little conveyance and our two deeds and we'll get them
Yeah.
rewritten.
We try to simplify, no matter what that is trying to challenge. Yes.
Well, it's also a little bit confusing when, when the same people own both
Yes.
of the property.
Yeah. That's unique for these. I don't remember one before it happened.
Well...
Where they've owned the same.
I...
I can't remember. Okay.
They're separate parcels.
Yes.
Whoever owns them, they're all...
Okay, short environmental assessment form.
Yes.
You ready, everyone?
Yeah.
Let's see. Lot line, boundary line adjustment, transfer of zero point... I don't think that's correct.
Zero nine four? Yeah.
That, is that correct? Zero nine four?
Well, she said less than a tenth of an acre.
Yeah, so I think it's zero nine, what was it on?
Are you looking at the application again?
No, I'm looking at the environmental assessment.
We got the, we got the one ninety one.
Zero nine four and then parcel B is zero point zero zero six.
Okay. Alright.
It's one to none.
Okay.
They got it.
Name of back plan, Ronald Klein, just to focus. Do I have the right one here? Yes, okay, I'm Ronald. Alright, number one, does a proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? No. Does a proposed action require permit, approval or funding from any other governmental agency? No. Total acreage of the site of the proposed... Action? Five point five acres, total acreage of the site of the proposed action, total, um...
Well, that was me not understanding. I mean, I...
I don't think that's correct. Total acreage of the site of the proposed action is...
You know, is that the, is that the amount that's being moved? Is it the, is it the property that's left? It was kind of unclear to me.
I, I think it should be the total
Property being moved.
Which is...
Point one.
The zero point one.
Yeah, total H should be physically disturbed. That would be the point. Total H, perhaps under control by the act.
That'd be zero, wouldn't it? What's being physically disturbed?
Being physically, so three A should be the point oh one and then B should be zero.
Yeah.
Can you just come fix that for me? And then I'll have you initial it. So this one should be the point zero one. That's fine. And this is gonna... And this one's gonna be zero and then just initial that change for me. Thank you.
Okay, number four, check all land uses that occur on adjoining and near the proposed action. So rural, non-agricultural. Okay, five is a proposed action of permitted use under the zoning rate, yes. Okay, five is the proposed action of permitted use under the zoning rate, yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Number six, is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape, yes. Seven is the site of the proposed action located in or desert adjoining state listed critical environmental, no. Eight A will, the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic of oppressor levels, no. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action, no. Only for the fish, right?
It actually, the stream doesn't, the stream doesn't even have fish.
Oh, okay.
Deer.
See, are any pedestrian accommodations for, or bike, bicycle use available on or near the site of the proposed action, no. Nine, does a proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code, no. Ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply?
I think that's no, is it?
But I think will the proposed, no, it should be no.
That's no.
Okay, well, see, I thought there was a stream, so.
That's okay.
Well, it's for potable water.
Yeah.
Maybe don't sit down until we're done.
Stand here and initial.
Where was that one?
That's number ten, so that's a no. Okay, eleven, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities, no. Twelve, does the site containing structure that is listed on either state or national register of historic places, no. Thirteen A does.
They didn't answer the next one, aren't they supposed to? Or no, is that a separate question?
Let's see.
It doesn't say if no, it's just.
Okay, is the proposed action located in an archaeological sensitive area?
She's got it.
Okay, thank you. Thirteen A, does any portion of the side of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state or local agency? No. B, would proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing oil land or water body, no. Fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site, check all that apply, forest.
It's mostly wooded, other than the acre.
There is shoreline.
Yeah, sure.
There is shoreline.
I mean. Check your.
Are we really on shoreline?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, fifteen. Fifteen, does the site of proposed action contain any species or animal associated habitats listed by state, federal government as threatened or endangered, no. Is the project site located in the hundred year flood plan, no. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge via the point, uh, non-point sources, no.
We didn't, that's why you guys have to be here.
Eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that result in the abandonment of water or other liquids, no. Nineteen, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the allocation of an active or closed style waste management facility, no. Uh, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation, no. Okay, okay. Part two.
Now you're, we're done. You're good, you can sit back down, part two. You have the separate part two, right?
Yep.
Okay, that's the one I need to fill out.
One, will the proposed action create material conflict when adopted land use plan is going, no. Two, will the proposed action result in a change in use, and change in the use or intensity of use of land, no. Three, will the proposed action appear the character of property existing to be, no. Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environment to protect or, or cause the establishment of a critical environment area, no. Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure? Or mass transit, biking or walkways, no. Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and if fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, no. Seven, will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies, no. Public private wastewater treatment, no. Eight, will the proposed action create the character of quality important historic archaeological artifacts or aesthetic resources, no. Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, U G weapons, water bodies, no. Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion funding or damage from, no. Eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard of environmental research, or no? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the C Q A for negative declaration?
I'll make a motion.
Short environmental form.
Okay.
The environmental.
Assessment.
Assessment form, yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Means you don't have that right now.
You just put ten on the ballpark?
I believe so, let's take a look. Yes.
We have to check and see if we, by law have to do these.
The E A F, sure, environmental.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. I think we do, but I mean.
And they have to be read into record, is that?
I'm pretty sure. But I'm going to recheck it all. Did we check that for you, yes or no?
And according to our code book, the public hearing is not mandatory. I'll make a motion that we skip the public hearing for this lot line adjustment.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
So we have the public hearing.
Okay. Now these. Not tonight, good. It's been a long day.
This gets down to the application procedures, what have we done so far?
It's in our code that deeds have.
The final deeds need to be.
Okay. Well, I think that.
That's suffice.
Yeah, I think, okay.
Because that also follows this.
Okay.
Discretion.
Yep, all right, I knew there was that discretion more than someplace. Okay.
So do they need the final deeds at the next meeting for approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, you're all set.
We'll see in October.
We'll see at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so November, okay, we'll catch on for November. Thank you, guys, I'll be in touch.
Okay, J V, did you enjoy this so far?
It's relaxing. I got a baby at home, so.
We've had a long day.
Well, the baby's probably sleeping now, and it'll be waking up as soon as you get home.
If I get lucky, she'll fall asleep for a night.
Okay, this is your annual granting, special use permit. Typically, we have someone come out and take a look at what you're doing there. Um, we're going to try to do better and get you in here in a more timely fashion, since it's, let's see.
I think it's June thirtieth.
Was it, was it reviewed on?
Not yet.
Only.
Yeah, we, when I saw it on here, I called April and we talked about what has occurred in the past. Because we don't wanna have any mix-ups, so anyone can come back at you or the planning board that we didn't do what we're supposed to do in planning, okay?
So at one point in time, at one stage, we did it even as late as the end of the year.
Yeah. Well.
Well, whose, whose calendar is it on, to make sure this is.
It's obviously not no one's calendar, we've discussed.
Shouldn't be on.
Rob called me last week and just said, hey, J V hasn't come in to renew their special use permit on the agenda.
Yeah, but we're going to put it on a.
Yeah, I put on reminder on the computer, that way.
So who, who, is it our, or is it the CEO's gotta go out and do it, or?
Well, you've got it initiated.
Are you sure? Because it could be done before it even gets to us.
So.
And it should be done before it comes to.
Right, it should be.
Previous years, it has been done before, we've had a report sent to us so that when we do this, everything's fine. But since the circumstances surrounding this meeting in the past couple of weeks, I didn't wanna take it off because we had already contacted you to come in. So we're going to do the resolution, and it's my understanding that our code guys will be out next week. And we're just gonna do a contingent on that visit. They'll probably be going and looking at the same things they look at every year. So I don't think you're gonna be running into any issues, go ahead.
According to the resolution, which is one thing, it says the commercial site review committee of the planning board will make periodic inspections and guarantee compliance with the recommendations of the town's state zoning laws and regulations.
That's from nineteen eighty-nine now.
So, yeah, it doesn't exist, does it?
No. I don't know if it exists.
But I just see.
At one point in time.
Yeah.
Right, and then other resolutions from like two thousand five, two thousand fourteen actually had it in it that code enforcement had done an inspection. But as time went on, it kinda just disappeared from the resolution.
Yeah.
What about this performance bond, is that?
What are you looking at, at the end?
Like a nineteen eighty-eight document are you looking at?
Yeah, I mean, does any of this hold, what holds up, what are we?
I just put in the original, Amory said put in the original, so everybody can see it.
I remember ever seeing that.
Well, well, I don't think.
Is that bond?
In twenty fourteen, I believe, is when it switched hands, and that resolution said that all the same conditions apply.
Yeah.
So these are the conditions.
That's the only conditions I've ever.
So I guess.
Have you ever.
I don't ever remember getting proof of this bond.
No, and that, we wouldn't, I would think that the, and our code enforcer would have that, just like with the other projects that have performance bonds. So this is what they typically take with them when they.
Well, it's also a period of eighteen months.
Yeah, that's, I understand, that's what during the construction phase, you mean? Was this when it was brand new?
Yeah.
I was five.
Yes, this is from nineteen eighty-nine.
I understand.
And I remember we even took walks around because of the oil barrels and the storage of batteries and.
Yeah.
Da 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 da.
But they claim, it's kind of.
Well, it looks like an actual proper review was done in two thousand six.
I added just like the sheet, yeah, so that's the sheet.
Do you have anything newer?
Not in the files, but I can vouch for the fact that we have had more current inspections.
Oh, I know we have, it's just we haven't had anything written.
Right.
Heck, I remember Tanner.
I mean. Which anybody wants to love, they're all there.
Was he a CEO?
No, he was a police officer.
Sheriff for town.
Okay.
Yeah, he was the CEO, yeah. He's like at my house.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Two thousand five.
Okay, so don't be nervous, this is normal routine. And like I said, we're going to do the resolution, contingent on what code enforcement, when they come out, any issues, okay? All right, is everyone on board here? Okay, we're gonna do the resolution. For J V Car Service Inc., you waited all this time for this. Resolution granting special use permit, whereas, oh goodness, you have Yajini?
You have.
Eugene for sure.
Okay, Sandhu is the operator of J V Car Servicing located at two forty-one Flatbush Road, West Cooksack in New York, on parcel bearing tax machna, max number seventeen point oh three dash one dash one three. And whereas J V Car Service requires a special use permit renewed annually and a secondhand junk and auto parts dealer's license, also renewable annually, to operate the secondhand junk and auto parts business at the Flatbush Road location, you still have all that?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas per resolution of the town board dated January eleventh, twenty ten, responsibility for the handling of the special use permit was transferred to the planning board in accordance with section one one two, article at ten of the code of the ten in Baltimore. And whereas Mr. Sandhu appeared before the planning board on September eleventh, twenty twenty-five for yearly discussion and renewal of the special use permit therefore be it, resolved that special use permit is hereby renewed for a one-year period expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with no additional conditions applying, okay. With no additional conditions applying beyond those currently applying to the permit. This resolution is approved contingent on the compliance of the site inspection performed by code enforcement.
If you want to change it at all, just let me know.
Okay, if you saw that the special use permit is hereby renewed for a one-year period expiring June thirty.
With conditions?
We could put it as a condition, I just think that, I think when the original was written, it was just on the, like the physical conditions that you were looking at on that page.
Oh, with no additional contingents to that?
To that, yeah, that's where I, and that's why I didn't add it, because I just.
Oh, beyond those currently applying to the permits, that does make sense.
That's why I said it's contingent on code enforcement's, like, approved inspection. Just because it's not necessarily a condition, right? It's more of a contingency that the inspection is good.
It is, I mean, the condition.
I mean, it is, but it's not added to the original list of conditions.
With no additional conditions, okay.
Change of how we.
All right, I know that over the years. We, no D C inspects for all those wonderful things that they're supposed to inspect. And I think in previous years, I was going to, we, you sent some of those reports, just so we have them in the files, okay? I don't know what they must be are. But we only ask for copies of those only for informational purposes, we have no authority or anything to do with those. But just so if anyone asks, you had, they were there when they were supposed to be there, okay? So that's the only reason why I'm bringing that up. Because our files, we didn't see, I know we've got them previously, but.
So you're, you're asking for them?
Yeah.
Yes, just so we have them, and if anyone has any questions regarding, they were there, that's their responsibility.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so this, uh, when you're expiring June thirty, with no additional conditions applying beyond those currently, applying beyond those currently in the original, I'm gonna put in the original permit. Um, this resolution is approved contingent on the compliance of the site inspection performed by code enforcement. And that's what we're gonna have, can I have a?
I'll make a motion to accept J V Car Service resolution granting special use permit with conditions.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I got some questions, have you, have you been inspected before? I don't, because I've been on the board and we always do things, I never knew of any inspections till I see this one here, as far as by code enforcement.
Yes.
So last time I was here, it was brought up that they had some vehicles that we, that we needed to move and whatnot. Which at that time we cleaned up. That was outside the.
For the renewal.
Right, yeah. Yeah, one of the things I was reading here, one time, James got cited because everything was over maximum height. I mean, I drive by and I can see mountains and stuff, it's probably a safety concern, they don't pile junk so high and crash it down. But I got a question, what is maximum height for garbage, or not garbage, but the cars and the scrap metal and stuff? Is that a question for me?
Yeah, that's a question for anybody.
I don't know.
I'm sure you don't know, you know, you stack as high as you can get it, but is there?
But is there, are there some codes that it's not supposed to go so high?
I don't think there's a code, it might be a G. I, I can't, it's an area state maybe, or, I mean, maybe it...
Because you wanna be ready for inspection when the guy comes, you wanna know what to spec.
I don't think there's anything in our code.
Okay. I mean, because Don Tanner wrote it up once, being over height.
Poor man's been dead for ten years.
Junk vehicles being over maximum height is implied with conditions and regulations. But I don't know what the condition regulations are. Um, so, can't really advise you on that. You also make sure you got workable fire extinguishers in the yard.
Insurance company usually does that also every year.
Yeah. The batteries on the pallets, I know that was an issue, oil containers, engine blocks and piles, tires, so... Generation.
I was like, I was twenty-eight, I said, I don't know.
I know.
Code enforcement mustn't call you, just schedule this.
Yeah.
And, um, commercial fire inspection at the same time.
Okay.
And there is a fee for the renewal of the special use permit, but I didn't ask you for it today. We'll wait until code enforcement gets back, and once he approves it, then I'll
Okay.
call up and ask for the payment.
Okay.
Just figured it was only fair.
We know when they're going, they'll probably call.
Uh, Vince said he was gonna try to get him to see you next week.
Yeah. Okay.
He has the number.
Sounds good, and then we come back here, or?
No.
I mean, uh, just to pay...
Only if there's issues, if there's issues, you're gonna have to come back here. Uh, well, not really, code enforcement, you'll have to fix whatever they say, they'll probably, they'll give us a report. But we know you're gonna fix them, you know, I mean, it's not like you're gonna be down there doing things that's not good for you. Okay?
The rules to comply, so, again.
Yeah.
How often is the insurance, once a year, guy come by?
Every year.
Yeah, I'd imagine, it's a big, I would imagine they're more concerned probably with the liability, because...
And I think DEC is every year, too.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
And you gotta watch sometimes for my neighbors, because we've had instances where they've come to the town.
Yeah, but the past, uh, as long as I've been on the board, which is a while now, we haven't had any real issues.
Mm-hmm.
And when we did, they, they, they were fixed.
They worked at it right away, right.
So, that's all good stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you for being patient.
Absolutely.
How old's the baby?
Six months. Congratulations.
Yeah. He's gone. Okay.
Are we all set?
You can go home.
Are we done?
We're not done.
Yeah, we're done.
We have, um, bye-bye.
What are we got to do there?
We have August fourth, the meeting minutes.